How close are we to being able to get those radios to work in Colloden? Because I know I've talked to-
So, we had, I got an email, I got two emails yesterday. One, and one from, and both from Williams, that said they have boosted the power to the Knight Road Tower. They're asking if we've seen any changes in that. I have not heard of any. The other was to, as part of this agreement, was to reprogram our radios for an additional 6,000 and some change. I'm still digging into that. I don't quite understand it. I know there's a Williams-Harris thing on here. I don't-
Yeah.
But, this system is still a work in progress.
And I think our county manager's asked our new IT guy to help look into that as well, so maybe we'll get some help from there as well.
I have no problems, but if we, if you've got 20 part-time firemen, and very few of them are active.
You've got more than that, you just, those are the active ones. Less than 20 are active.
That actually show up.
More on paper.
As long as you keep a good list of who's got them and where they're at, so if they don't participate, they become non-active, we can recover them.
The other, the other option that we have that we can do with this, with, on that note, is we still have full-time employees that live in the county, that we could put one in their hand, and they can show up and help us too.
How many, great.
Got a motion, motion approved. Public safety radio purchase as presented by Chief Perry.
That's correct.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Ambrose to do so. Got a second, I saw Mommy's first. Commissioner Mommy, any discussion on that? Here or none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Passage unanimously. Chief, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is EMS billing. Who wants to go first? County manager and a chief?
I'll just introduce it. This was something that I was asked about when initially hired. One of my first conversations with the chief was about outsourcing the EMS billing, and it's been a little process, so I'm gonna let Matt tell you what he's gone through and what his recommendation is.
Chief?
To, to, to give you the Cliff's Notes version of this.
Is it on?
The Cliff's Notes version is, when I took over, or now going on a year and a half ago, this was one of the first things I brought up. We had a change in leadership with inside the administration here. We brought in Ms. King. Ms. King then asked me to not do anything with it. I did come back before the board one time and say we needed to make some adjustments. The board opted then to go just to fixed-rate billing to see what would happen. After evaluating everything, it's just, we need to, to move this out of our office and hand it over to a professional billing company. Now ultimately, this is how, this is what we're dealing with currently. We have some technological difficulties. Ultimately, we don't have any light, you know, certified EMS billers in our office. They've all been self-taught, they do a fine job, they keep up with what they can, but the, the informational background and the foundations has not been there ever. We do have some technological difficulties. We have intermittent station internet issues. We have a patient care reporting software that is free from the state, that at times we lose PCRs into the, into the cloud, I guess, and they go away, and it takes us a while to pull those back down. It's a state software, and it causes us a lot of headache. We have some issues with bill pay. We don't have the ability for people to pay their bills online. We don't even have a credit card machine to do that either. So it's, send us a check or send us cash is the only way we get those after we electronically bill through the internet for Medicare and Medicaid and private insurance companies. Affordable Care Act did some restructuring to Medicare and Medicaid. Definitely cut reimbursements, especially to EMS providers. I will tell you that in the last, since I took over, there's been at least an 11% reduction in payouts in Medicare and Medicaid over the last two years, for EMSs specifically. Everybody is feeling that pension, we're no stranger to that as well. Aside from doing the billing, we have to deal with open records requests from lawyers. We get several of those a week. We deal with them from healthcare facilities where, you know, you have a, someone who has been involved in a crash and has no ID on them, and it's a John Doe, and then we're having to work back and forth between the healthcare entities trying to figure out patients, patient information, and patient demographics. We deal with appeals. We have a 20 to 30% denial rate first time for our bills that we submit. That is remarkably high. And I'll touch on that here in a minute. And then aside from that, that phone doesn't stop ringing in Headquarters Fire Station. It rings all day. And they will take care, they have to stop billing at times and answer the phones and deal with that. Due to inadequate staffing, we've got one full-time biller, Ms. Roxanne Dewberry, who's my office manager, has to stop her administrative duties with the fire department to help with billing, and we're eight to 10 weeks behind on bills, getting them out. That's, has expanded significantly in the last several weeks, and we're at a point now that we just need to get this out of our office. Here's how we generate a bill. Someone calls 911, we pick them up, we take them to the hospital, and we drop them off. Paramedic completes a patient care report on how they handled all their clinical treatment of the patient. That is eventually saved, and is sent to a field training officer who does a quality control check, make sure that the clinical side of the house was handled appropriately, we're following guidelines and protocols, and make sure that patient care was top-notch. And then it goes over to billing. We have to, there are a few things that are mandatory. We've gotta have a patient name, we have to have a patient birthday, social security number if we can get it, and an address and phone number. That's the minimum we need to bill. So we try to scrub those, is what it's called, to make sure that they're good to go before it's sent to Medicare and Medicaid. Once we have submitted that bill, you should essentially see reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid within 15 days. Your private insurance companies, your Blue Cross and your Blue Shields and all those others, should see reimbursement up to 21 days. If someone is uninsured or just decides to pay out of pocket, we never know when we get that back. If we get non-payment from our invoice date, up to 90 to 120 days, then it is sent to collection. So that's how it works. Like I said, we're eight to 10 weeks behind now. We're seeing up to a 20% denial rate on first-time bills, which means they have to stop billing, go back, make changes and adjustments and corrections, and then resubmit. One billing clerk ultimately is who's handling this, Ms. Roxy is, is working herself, frankly, she's burning the candle at both ends, and trying to help keep up with billing and such. I think we're leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table by not doing this.
And what's the reason for the denial rate? I mean, what's the root cause?
It could be anything from, you, you say your birthday is January 1st, and we put January 10th.
So it's clerical?
It can be clerical, it can be, so let's say I work a cardiac arrest, and in the report, the paramedic didn't say something about having the patient on a cardiac monitor. Well, that went from a, and we may have billed it out as ALS, Medicare and Medicaid kicks it back and says, "No, no, no, it's BLS." We have to fight that. It's, it could be anything from a signature that's not legible to, it's just, it's just kicked back. Most of it can, should be caught on the front end, and we're not catching it. We're just not catching it.
Does that go away by outsourcing it?
So, yes, sir, it will. Because they are going to take over on the scrub part of it, with folks that are trained to do it, that have been doing it, and frankly, have more than one person having to do the entire billing process.
But we were still responsible for our EMS to get the right information to-
Correct. And we have, we have done a far better job on the things that they can control. They still get kicked back. Again, it's on the scrub side of it that we should catch on the front end. I'll, I'll give you an example. The way we currently do patient care reports now, one of the things I've been screaming about is before they finalize any PCR, that it had, or be sent, yeah, be sent to billing, that a supervisor should have to check off on it. Well, currently, we don't have any way to do that with the software we use now.
What's PCR?
Patient care report.
Thank you.
So all the pecking and typing that goes on behind the patient's head while we're doing what we need to do, that's what, that's being done. I reached out to a number of companies. Five companies submitted proposals. The way they typically operate is they will take a percentage off of the gross collected. So if we collect $10, they'll take 6% or whatever it is of that $10, and right off the top. As you can see, the, those are the companies that replied, and then the percentage of gross collected is what they, in their proposals, would set for us. We ranged from 6% all the way up to 10. After discussing with Mr. Hedges, the pros and cons of everything, we settled on having face, we talked to, I talked to everybody. We had face-to-face meetings with Trinity EMS Billing and Consulting out of Hinesville, and Emergency Medical Billing out of Commerce, were the two that we had conversations with. Both companies, one-day billing. In other words, within one business day, they will put every, everything hits the insurance companies or Medicare and Medicaid. Remember, we're eight to 10 weeks, they're one business day. Both of them had 1% denial rates on claims first time through. Remember where we were. They have online bill play, and they have staff dedicated to collecting, both over the phone, through the internet, and through the mail. They will handle, and this was a big one for me, they will handle all lawyer and information requests. We will see an increased reimbursement rate. And the other biggest one, as a department head, is I'm gonna finally be able to get ahold of the data I need to start running these shifts and ambulances a little more efficiently. In other words, time of day, staffing, location, movement, who's doing the best job, who's doing the worst job, who do I need to improve on, who do I need to praise? This will dramatically help on the, on my side operationally, and I'll be excited about that. After we've had a meeting with all, with the companies, we're making the recommendation for Trinity EMS Billing and Consulting. They offered two things that the other company didn't. One of them is they will go back and rebuild for us. In other words, they will take care of all of our backlog, and then look at, first Medicare, it's six months, for Medicaid, it's 90 days. They will go back and look at those and resubmit on our behalf. They said they would do that in the first weekend, two weekends. But what they did is that they bring everybody in, they take two weekends of their staff time and dedicate it totally to us. They will have one point of contact for us, which we really liked. The other company did have about 80 employees, but you didn't really have a single point of contact. This company's a little smaller, and we have one person that we would, we would correspond with, which is nice. The other company would not go back and do the back billing that we have. And finally, we had an option to either purchase hardware at a 7.5% gross collection rate, or to opt out and just do 6%. The Trinity says we don't offer that. But what we do is Trinity absorbs the cost to take that free software that's giving us so much trouble, and then they use the paid version with all of the perks that comes with it that no cost to us. So aside from having quicker and cleaner bills to be able to get out, I'm gonna be able to get those things like the supervisor sign off. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot. And then ultimately, we'll have better fields to pull data from, to know things like first-time pass innovation success rates and IV stick rates, and those things that we need to come back to you as a board and say, "I can justify these expenditures or these needs," and I have a very difficult time doing that.
Chief, you talked about, you talked about hardware and software, meaning, and so I wanna make sure we're clear on it. Trinity's gonna provide the software, is what it sounds like, but are they not going to, or do we already have the hardware, the laptops?
We have the hardware. We went with, we went with a, an iPad this time around that we purchased through grant funding. Ultimately, to do nine, if, if, if we see an increase, and I'll just throw a number out there, say $900,000 is what they bring in, well, 1% of that is $9,000. Well, I can buy-
Right.
-the equipment that we need to do all that for well less than that. So I opted for the paid software and to be able to do those things behind the scenes that nobody sees, but is very beneficial.
Let's talk numbers. Do you have, for the trailing 12 months, or for 2018, do you have the total amount that Monroe County collected, actually received?
Yes, sir, it was around a half a million dollars.
$500,000 on how many runs did we bill for, do you know?
Was like 2,900 or 3,000.
Okay, we have a million, is what we got.
Did it never go up since we raised our fees for the ambulance calls?
No, sir.
No.
And again, the eight to 10-week lag time really hurts us.
Mm-hmm.
And again, 85% of our patient, patient load is Medicare/Medicaid, so whatever they pay you-
At one time, we weren't even billing what Medicaid would pay on some of the calls.
That's right. And we saw, we saw just a tick, a hair tick up, but the delay is what's killing us.
All right, so, so back to, so half a million dollars, what we collected last, last year.
Approximately.
For 18, is that what, okay.
Approximately.
All right, and then from there, so at 6%, that'd be $30,000. Now, one quick question, too, is how many, right now, sitting over in your office, how many folks are, do we have dedicated to billing? One person? Roxy's, Roxy is overseeing it, but she's not the dedicated person.
Correct.
You've got a dedicated person, and what's gonna happen with that person?
I have an open position that I never filled in the admin side.
Okay.
So, we're going to, I don't have anybody that could fill in for Ms. Dewberry at any point. We need to have somebody in there that can help split her load as well. It is, it's pretty significant.
Totally get that. So you've got a budgeted open position-
Correct.
-you move that person into, but in essence, we, we don't have to pay the billing portion of it.
Correct.
Is there anybody, no, any other payroll affected by this?
No, sir.
All right. One other question is, what's the term of the contract if Trinity comes in?
12 months.
Okay, so have you talked to them about possibly going with a, getting a lower percentage amount and, and doing it for a longer period of time?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. I have a little bit of experience with that, because MedPro, we have our own billing department, you know, and so it's, it's one of those things where I think you could negotiate that, that's just my-
The, the other thing that Trinity said is, he looked at me and he said, "Give us 12 months if you don't like this virus."
Well, I got that.
And we can negotiate after-
My point would only be, you know, hey-
Yeah.
-if we, if we, if we do a three-year contract with a one-year out, would you do it for 5%? And then you save yourself one, you get that extra, an extra 1% instead of, I don't know how much they've reviewed our current records, but at $500,000, have they ever, have they said, "Hey, we're gonna get you to $700,000, or we're gonna get you to," go ahead.
Every company that we chatted with was very reluctant to tell us what we're gonna get you. I will tell you that their per-trip reimbursement rates on average were $100 to $150 higher than what we get.
Per trip?
Per trip.
Per trip collected or per trip total?
Collected.
Do you know that number? I mean, I, I, you, I mean, you did 2,900 runs, we didn't bill for that many. I mean, let me back up, we didn't collect that many.
Correct. We, we, we billed for 2,900 and some change. I don't have that, that in front of me.
You understand where I'm going on that?
Yes, sir.
So I mean, if we had half, if we collected half, let's just round it up to 3,000, then we had 1,500, and if you had $150, just say $100 extra, that's 150,000-
Yeah.
...in extra revenue. So we could get from 500,000 to 650,000, even with the 6% cost, doesn't matter, we're still way up on-
Way up.
Plus the, plus the, we've already got the budget for the employee that we currently have.
The other thing, too, is that this company also can bill auto insurance. Whoever gets to that money first gets it all.
That's correct, yes.
And with I-75, we deal with a lot of crash calls. Don't let it rain.
I got a question, Joe, go ahead.
I've got a question on it. When they bill it, all right, when it's, when it's denied or something like that, or it's not, it's collectible but they don't pay it, how long will this Trinity take it before they send it to collection, and/or what is our fee for the collection?
So they send it to our collection company that we already currently use, and it's, whatever we set, usually they recommend, they'll give you a recommendation, but theirs was like ours, 90 to 120 days.
And also, will they handle billing for our fire calls?
No, sir. They don't write down, do fire calls. We, we could technically do that in-house through invoicing. Ultimately, it's, you know, if we damage something or we lose something, then we can invoice the insurance company.
Currently, we're not billing fire calls.
That's right.
Because a lot of homeowners' insurance have got a payment in there for the fire department. If, I mean, I'm not gonna bill everybody out there, but if, if it's a, a loss and they've got it in their insurance, I think we should be billing for it.
We, we could explore it.
Well, and, and so, that's a good point. We can touch on that, but just get back to the EMS billing portion of it.
I mean, they'll bill for that, too, if they're gonna do the EMS.
Well, but Trinity doesn't bill for fire, I mean, I see, again, very valid point, something we need to, to go add.
I think our county manager's actually looking in the same-
That's right. So, do we have, do we have a motion on the, do we, we've got questions. He's done a presentation. Any other questions for Chief Perry?
Yeah, just one question. You mentioned that some of the self-payers pay cash?
Yes, sir.
So how is that gonna work? Or we're gonna have an avenue within, because they're not gonna be here, right?
Correct.
They're not gonna be on-site, so we'll still have an avenue for them to come to our fire station?
They will, and we will handle it exactly like we handle it now. Also, all the money collected comes to us first, and then we compare notes and then we send them a check each.
That's right.
And we got good audit controls on that question?
Yes, sir.
Lori, you'll probably ask it.
She, there she is, right there.
That's right.
Don't worry.
It's a pleasure of the board.
One more question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Mike.
Do we have a way of tracking? I, I would like to just, my preference is to do it for a year and see, or have, like Greg said, have an out, you know, unilateral out if we're not satisfied after a year, after negotiating. That would, that'd sound like a great idea. But I would like to, I would like to have a tickler come back a year from now to say, a report saying-
How much have we?
How many, we wanna compare how many times we went out, because you gotta have that as sort of the, the normative adjustment, and what percentage our collections were, and did that improve? And, you know, hopefully, it'll, it'll have improved at least enough to fund the 25,000 or so expense that this is gonna be, 25 to 30,000 a year.
You're gonna see an improvement.
You're gonna see it dramatic.
I can tell you already-
Well, I'm sorry, we didn't do it last time. I don't, I don't, you know, it sounds like we should've done it.
Kind of threw three options and-
Now, when you go out on a call, who's gonna actually code it out? Because this billing company is gonna only code by what you code give them, and if they wrong-code it, you leave a lot of number, money on the table.
So what hap, what we do is, we, we, the, the nice thing about Trinity was, they said, "Your paramedics are there to paramedic. They're not there to code and bill."
Oh.
And so we, we push on our staff side to document patient care, because the doctors and surgeons read that report. The coding people come secondly, and all they need is a name, a birthday, a social security number, home address, and that bill can be sent all kinds of-
But they need to know what you did on the scene, though.
We take care of it.
A lot of equipment we use.
Yes, sir, and it's documented.
Okay, as long as it, they, we get billed, billed for what we use.
Oh, it's documented. Don't worry. The one thing I may have to do is, Trinity said, "We can keep things the way they are now." They may come back with a billing structure that they would ask for the board to approve, so the rate scale. That would be the only thing I think I'd have to come back for.
We'll look, I mean, we can always look at that.
I make a motion we approve.
Got a motion to approve Chief Perry's recommendation for Trinity to be the billing service. Got a second from Commissioner Rowland. Any further discussion? Here or none, I'll call the question. All in favor? All right. Chief, next item, still you.
Still me.
Oh, oh, hold on.
Real quickly before moving that, we just need to make sure we have a business associate agreement in place with Trinity before y'all start operating with them.
Do we need an action item on that?
We'll have to bring that back.
Okay, so, yes.
Do you need to go?
No, sir. Wesley had a family issue just immediately occur, but I can handle this, and I've got Robert Shepherd here.
Actually, I'll do most of this and let you answer the questions.
Even better.
All right. Next item on the agenda is ambulance rehab and purchase. Chief, have at it.
Uh, that's mine.
Joe, I'm sorry.
You got a clicker?
Oh, I had both of y'all down here, so, yes.
Okay, I, I'll present, he answers the questions.
Okay.
The issues that we have with our ambulances right now, high mileage, one has blown transmission, one is out of service, two of them have front-end issues, and three of them are currently running around with replaced engines. This slide shows the year, the make, and the amount of mileage that we have on our six ambulances. This is the 2007 Ford. I'm told it's used for backup only. This is the 2010 Chevy. Engine's been replaced, front end has been rebuilt, has over 269,000 miles. The second 2010 Chevy, engine replaced, transmission replaced, 253,000 miles, and I didn't wait to take this photo when it was in the shop. Matt provided this one for me. It's the 2013 Chevy. It's out of service right now. The engine, the transmission is blown, it's 193,000 miles. This is a remount candidate. And our final, 2016 Ford has 120,000 miles. Turbocharger and engine have been replaced. And the final one is the 2017 Ford. It has had electrical system repairs, lowest mileage in the fleet of 59,000. And I would remind the board that during 2018, not 2019, we spent over $9,500 in wrecker and towing costs on our ambulances alone. So our recommendations are, is to remount the 2013 Chevy at a cost of $115,000 using the 2010 funds, the remainder of the 140,000. The remount, as I understand it, is you take the box off and you replace everything else, the chassis, the cab, everything, and then you remount the box on the back. And finally, is to go ahead and authorize the purchase for a new 2019 Ford F-450, a new ambulance at a cost of 159,000. The funding for that will come from the 2020 splash funds or bonds, and you need to know that there is a six to eight-month lead time on purchasing a new ambulance. Again, remount one and go ahead and purchase another one. Mr. Chairman?
Chief, okay, first, Chief, do you have anything to add to, to that presentation?
Just a couple. Wesley Jackson and Robert Shepherd have spent the last three days trying to find how quickly we can turn one around and, and find a new one on the lot. We found two that we could purchase really quickly. The first one is sitting in Orlando right now from Wheelto Coach, who makes a fine ambulance, it's 170. We could essentially go down there tomorrow and grab it. There's another one at Custom Works, that's about 45 days out, that would be brand-new, and it would cost us around 170 as well, and it could be here in the next 60 days. Our problem is, and everybody has the same problem, on the turnaround time for new trucks. Truck chassis are, Ford, you can't get them right now for at least, what was I said, 20 weeks at a minimum on a Ford F-450 right now, and it's expected to get worse. So Chevy's 12 weeks, and Dodge is 46.
And F-350 probably be the same, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir. And those 450s are what we need for these.
Mm-hmm. Bigger, stronger?
Yes, sir.
In a handle of the box and the-
How'd you come up with the cost of 159,000 for new one? If that's, if you ordered or something?
Yes, sir. That was the original, when we, when we first started hustling, remember he said, I kinda lost my poker face, I'm not gonna lie, when he started telling me about this money that we needed to get rid of, and, so we made a phone call.
Why would we remount if you could buy a brand-new ambulance for $44,000 difference?
Because that saves us $44,000 that I can put towards something else we desperately-
But then you got all the old beds, I mean, the old boxes.
Boxes are great.
Boxes in good shape.
Yeah, I know, but I looked at your backup at 2007, you've got 192,000 miles on it. And that's for a backup only. Why was it not used more when you got a 2010 with 270,000 miles on it? Is it because that 350 wasn't strong enough?
No, sir, it's because every truck was, truck was in and out of the shop constantly. It was fruit basket turnover in that office every day scrambling to get a truck running.
Other questions for Chief Perry or for Kim, County Manager?
The question would be, would we go ahead and get to rebuild a one and go ahead and pick up one of these other ones? Could you need an ambulance now?
Yes, sir.
Would we want to go ahead and pick up that, those ones available or wait and let them order it?
This is going to be, the, the funding for, for the new one is coming from the bonds. Those monies, I believe, are going to be available sometime late June. We have access to other source of funding and if you want him to go to Florida and buy one for 170 at that, what is it, $11,000 more, we can put him on the road tomorrow.
This is just, speaking for myself, just my gut reaction is, is, you're talking about $11,000 savings and using bond money that's going to take us three months at least to get, if not, you know, and so if we-
But then it's six months out on getting ambulance.
Well, but it seems to me like we save $11,000 that he can again put to other equipment purchases.
How long will the remount take?
Four to six months.
Yeah.
See, he's in need now. Can you get by what you got for four to six months?
We're going to incur increased maintenance costs, but yet we can, we'll continue playing the, the game of what's running today.
Okay. I mean, between that and towing costs, you know, I hate to say a spend an extra, an extra $11,000 in a six-month timeframe, because that's, you know, if you extrapolate that out, that's, that's $22,000 in a year timeframe. And that's 15% interest, you know, on, on 160, in 159 anyway.
So the custom work price is now 170?
Yeah, the 159,000 was an older price. That ambulance was quoted from Custom Works, which now has gone up to 170.
Could, is there any option for, you say, I mean, most of us up here are wheeler-dealer kind of, kind of have wheeler-dealer mentality in the sense that, hey, you know, we'll, we'll cut you a check today for 159, can you at least go back and try that? I mean, you know, you're going to, you're not going to make them mad.
Yeah, the numbers I got are going to be about the best they can do.
Yeah, and we have other quotes here. Well, one of them was for $230,000 for a new truck on the lot. And we had another one for 212 on the lot right now. These were the two. Wheel Coach and Custom, Custom Works done the last five trucks, been good trucks. Wheel Coach makes fine ambulance, too.
Can you even buy it now at 159? Because I, what you told me is, you can't buy it for 159 anyway. Is that what I'm?
That's right. I called a friend the other day who buys ambulances and he had to produce a purchase order for trucks that he had on, on a quote. And they said, "You gotta have a purchase order on Fri-" this was on Thursday. He was buying five trucks.